The regularly scheduled council meeting of the town of Southern Shores Town Council for December 3, 2013 is in session. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I very remind you all that anyone wishing to speak during the comment period should sign up on the sign-up sheet back there by the door as you come in. It's been my practice, as you regular attendees know, to call attention to our residents who have departed us since the last meeting. And since our last meeting, we have lost Randy Brinkman. Randy was a resident in town for some thirty years. Noted for his voice, a great singer, a devoted member of the choir at the Presbyterian Church. We'll miss him, all of us who knew Randy will miss him greatly. And during a moment of silence, I would call your attention to and consideration of all the men and women who are serving our country around the globe in defense of liberty and in support of democracy. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Council, you have before you under tab one, the minutes of November 6, 2013. If you haven't found it, there is a typographical error under the mayor's comments of last week, and the clerk has already corrected it. With that typo, I would move approval of the minutes of our council meeting of November 6, 2013. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same side. The minutes are approved. We turn now to our town manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, this meeting tonight is for the purpose of organizing a new council for the upcoming calendar year. And so with that, I will respectfully request that Councilman George Kowalski, George, join me at the podium. George, I present to you this certificate of appreciation in recognition of your dedicated service to the town of Southern Shores as a council member from 2009 to 2013, and the town expresses its sincere gratitude. The town will always be considered unique as long as dedicated citizens desire to serve their town unselfishly to make it a better place to live. We wish you the very best for the future, and thank you. And this is signed by all the members of the council, and the mayor, and the town manager. And George, on behalf of the town and its staff, present to you this town seal in recognition of your service, and I do, for my personal note, thank you very much for all your help during the last four years for me as town manager, and getting to know you, and all the great projects we were able to work together. And the podium is yours.
Thank you. Well, it's the last time, I think, I'll be speaking publicly in Southern Shores. But ten years ago, I actually came to this town twelve years ago, but ten years ago, I decided to volunteer for the town. And I spent, let me see, ten years doing it, with four years on the Lusshers Planning Board, and then four years on the council, and then two years before that, doing various very long committees. Blew in four years ago into this council. We shook things up. We changed it, rearranged it. I think it's been a great four years. I think a lot has happened in four years. I've gone through a lot of crossroads in my last four years, a lot of paths to take and choose as I walk down the path of life, and this is just one of those. And I look at it that way, and so the crossroad is that mayor's that way, life is this way. Florida is in two days that way.[394.62][394.62](laughter) That way. And dinner in about fifteen minutes, I do have to go out to dinner, is that way. So there are all sorts of crosswords one deals with. So I leave this town capable of the hands of a fantastic town manager, and a new mayor, a new council. I wish them all the best of luck, and keep making this the best town that we have on the Outer Banks. All righty. Thank you.[427.66][427.66](applause)
And Mayor Denny has requested, you're requested to join me at the podium if you would, and ask anyone to stand beside you if you like. Well, I'm sad to say you go, Hal, but I know you'll be around every day. First of all, I'd like to start out, reading a certificate of appreciation for Hal Denny is presented this day, December 3, 2013. In recognition of your dedication to serve the town, with ten years of service, four years as a council member, and six years as mayor, the town of Southern Shores expresses its sincere gratitude. The town will always be considered unique when citizens like you desire to serve their town unselfishly to make it a better place to live. We wish you the very best for the future, and thank you. And this is signed by members of the council and the town manager. And Hal, two of your former colleagues wrote such gracious letters that we decided that we have to read these into the record with you tonight. The first is from former mayor Paul Sutherland, and it reads, Dear Hal, congratulations to you and sincere thanks for a highly successful time as an elected official for the town of Southern Shores. Your service as a town councilman, mayor pro tem, and mayor has been exemplary. Under your leadership, the town has flourished and grown, just to mention a few of your accomplishments that you should be proud of, are initiation, planning, and execution of a needed roadway maintenance program. None had existed before. To say that this was needed is an understatement. Resurrection of the stalled canal dredging project. This required not only a program review and change, but also successful financial planning. Next, major town hall physical improvements that every citizen of the town should be extremely proud of. Next, initiation of the televising of town council meetings. This is a first. The Hal Denny imprint was not just restricted to elective office leadership and accomplishments within the town of Southern Shores. Dare County at large was also a beneficiary. You served with distinction as a member of the Dare County Control Group and as a board member of the Dare County Tourism Bureau. In addition, your energy was very present at Duck Methodist Church, where you routinely were deeply involved. Most noteworthy was your personal dedication in several mission trips to devastated areas to help. Public, community, and Polk County service at large, as well as church, have all benefited from your dedication, energy, and foresight. I personally know of nothing that has not benefited from your involvement. I am certain that this will continue after your present elected service. I am personally honored to have served with you. Though we were opponents in an election, we subsequently worked together like we were never opponents. It is my good fortune to not only know you, but also to call you a close friend. Patton and I want to sincerely wish you and Billy the best for the future. We are certain the best is yet to come for both of you. God bless and fair winds. Paul Sutherland, former mayor, town of Southern Shores.[681.82][681.82](applause) And next, from former councilman Eugene Kennedy, who served the town council 1999 to 2003. On the occasion of Hal's so-called retirement, I want to make a few remarks about his service to the town of Southern Shores and the Outer Banks community. In a town of volunteers, Hal belongs at the top of any list. His unselfish service to the town began in the civic associations and clubs and continued as councilman for four years and mayor for another eight years. I had the pleasure of serving with him on the town council for several years. While we certainly did not agree on every issue he faced, he was always considerate of other points of view and was willing to compromise. He opted for common sense solutions and placed emphasis on what was best for all. Hal did not limit himself to working only in Southern Shores. He was also active in the Duck Methodist Church, the Civil Air Patrol, and the Dare County Tourism Board. Both Hal and his wife Billy were among the first to offer a helping hand to those in need. Like many living on the Outer Banks, Hal enjoyed fishing and the surf. He was a member of the Southern Shores Sharks Surf Fishing Team and fished in many local tournaments. Always concerned with the environment, he was very considerate of fish, feeding many without ever removing them from the water.[774.93][774.93](laughter) His teammates, including myself, were also able to accomplish this feat. Even though Hal will no longer be holding public office, I suspect that he will continue to provide wise counsel to those who do, and that he will also continue his tradition of giving of himself for the betterment of others. Sincerely, Eugene L. Kennedy, councilman, 1999, 2003.[802.38][802.38](applause) And Hal, finally, I'd like to present you with this gift as a token, small token, of the town's appreciation. And you can tell when you see this that it's certainly not, the ladies didn't pick this, I think I did. So anyway, I hope you like it, but it is a Noah nautical chart. It's got Southern Shores right in the middle, and all our distinctive geographic features around the town. So thank you for your service.
That's beautiful. Hold it up there. That's beautiful.[840.62][840.62](laughter) And I was on the internet picking up this chart a couple or three weeks ago to see how the channel, our boat channel, was depicted. It took me an hour to find it on the internet.[858.82][858.82](laughter) If I'd had that two weeks ago, that was marvelous. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Hal, from a personal comment, thank you so much for your mentorship and your guidance to me as the town manager of the last three and a half years, and I really appreciate everything, and I look forward to seeing you every day.
Peter, thank you so much.
Thank you. The podium is yours.
Sort of, I don't know what to say. Letter from Paul Sutherland is, and Gene Kennedy, is a great surprise. I served with both of them. We did a lot of good work in town together. I ran against Paul for mayor in 2001. I think he beat me by eleven votes. We didn't let it get in our way, and I subsequently served as his mayor pro tem. So it's good to hear from Paul and to hear from Gene Kennedy, who I respected greatly. Those of you who didn't know Gene, was without a voice box, and he spoke with one of these handheld devices against his throat, and he was, even though he had that handicapped, he was quite loquacious. And we sometimes had to threaten him with stealing his batteries to get him under control. But he's a delightful guy to work with, and I've missed him since he left town. But I've written some stuff out here because I thought, left to my own devices, I might go on forever. After you hear me, you may say, well, he went on forever. But anyway, I just wanted to say that four years ago, George Kowalski, that guy back there, and I were sworn in as council members. We joined within member Jody Hess to sort of start redirecting the town to its primary purpose. That purpose being service to its citizenry at a level they desired and are willing to support. And our first initiative, and I believe George referred to this, was to propose a tax increase of three cents devoted exclusively to infrastructure. A matter that I'd been harping on since 1999, and Paul mentioned it in his letter. The people bought into that. We then started on other improvements on a number of matters that had been neglected for too long. And two years ago, we were joined on council by David Sanders and Larry Lohan, two persons really dedicated to the town, to good government, relevant experience. David has lived in town for thirty-five years.
Since eighty-four. Twenty-eight years.
Okay. A long time. He's been a faithful attendee at town council meetings for years and years and years. And Larry Lohan joined us. He's been on the planning board, proved himself to be an exemplary member of the planning board. And so during the last four years, we've made what I believe to be tremendous improvements in our town government. Now, I mention this primarily to call attention to the fact that it isn't one person that can do this. And while accolades are good to hear, the reality is that it takes five people. I'm very grateful to have had the opportunity to work with these five other citizens as a council to move the town forward. No one does it on their own. It's dangerous to single out any one person or any two persons in a meeting like this, but I'm going to do so anyway. Jody Hess has been our mayor pro tem during the entire six years that I have served as mayor, and she has been a rock. Jody is always prepared, has kept me from going astray many times. I'm truly grateful for Jody's service to the town, now spanning ten years, and for her helpfulness to me. We didn't always agree, but we always disagreed as friends. And Jody will be a friend for life. Also want to mention George, George Kowalski. George had hard enough four years ago to run for council as a write-in candidate, an unheard-of thing, and he ended up a winner. I think it might have surprised George. It's been a joy to serve with George. George was always prepared. Sometimes he was overly prepared.[1266.58][1266.58](laughter) But he kept us all on our toes, and the people of Southern Shores truly are indebted to George. He's a good man. Many years as a firefighter. His long service on the planning board, including several years as chair, and of course, his exemplary service on council. And my personal thanks to you, George, and my appreciation for what you did, and I've endured every moment of our association. But it takes more than a council sitting up there on the throne to make a town go. The town's employees are equally responsible for making our town the premier residential location on the Outer Banks. Under our town manager's unsurpassed leadership, we have a superb staff from top to bottom, each truly an expert in their duty, high morale, and dedicated to furtherance of the town, the good of the town as a council. It was my privilege to visit with each of the employees today, each of the town staff today, to congratulate them on their outstanding performance, and to thank them for the many kindnesses they have extended to me during the last four years. And I will greatly miss seeing them, many of them on a daily basis. Before I close it out, there's another person, one other person in the audience I want to My wife, Billy. My wife of sixty-seven years is a lady of merit. She has supported me in many ways during my service to the town. Advice, ever careful, sympathy, bucking up, enduring an old grouch when things did not go his way. She's always had my back, and I'm grateful to be so lucky as to have her. Lastly, I sincerely thank all of you for making it possible for me to serve you in an elected capacity. Your support and encouragement has warmed my heart, made my presence among you most fulfilling. Again, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'll still be around. I'm unhappy about the way things are going in 2017.[1471.23][1471.23](laughter) I will ask Billy for permission to run again.[1480.01][1480.01](laughter) Any of you want to make odds on what she will say? And finally, certainly, congratulations to Tom Bennett and Leo Holland. Both dedicated to the town, have worked ever since they got here in some capacity to the furtherance of the town, and it's going to be a stronger council with you, Leo, and you, Tom, on it. So goodbye, all you all.
I now call on the town clerk, Sheila Kane, to administer the oath for the new incoming council member first, and the new incoming, excuse me, the new incoming mayor first, and then the new incoming council member. So Mayor-elect Tom Bennett and Mrs. Bennett, if y'all will stand over here on my right side.
(inaudible). Hi, Tom Bennett. I hereby solemnly swear, having been duly elected mayor of the town of Southern Shores, the municipal election held November 5, 2013, that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties imposed upon me as mayor of the town, Southern Shores, by law, so help me God.[1614.83][1614.83](applause)
And now I'll ask Councilman-elect Leo Holland and his wife to approach.
Hi, Leo Holland. I hereby solemnly swear, having been duly elected as a council member of the town of Southern Shores, but the municipal election held on November 5, 2013, that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, that I will faithfully and partially discharge the duties imposed upon me as council member of the town of
And Mayor Bennett, the order of this meeting is now in your hands.
Thank you, Peter. I appreciate it. Can you hear me? There's two things that are first order of business, I think, for me, and Hal's already done most of this, but I want to thank, personally thank, George Kowalski for his service to the town, not just as a councilman or a member of the planning board, but also for his service to the volunteer fire department for twelve years. I think that's a pretty significant accomplishment, and I'm proud of George for his efforts. Also appreciate George's treatment of me during the campaign. He called me on one occasion to alert me about a potential problem that I could possibly encounter. He didn't have to do that, but he took the time out of his day campaigning to call me and just give me a heads up. Not many folks would have done that, and I think it was noteworthy on his part, and I really appreciated it. Finally, I'm going to take you back a bit because there's one other person I have to recognize as having a tremendous amount of influence on my life, and that's Hal Denny. I'll go back to Hurricane Katrina in 2005. I'll go back to Hurricane Katrina in 2005. Our church, a group at our church called Carrying Hands, took a number of mission trips to Biloxi, Mississippi. And I was fortunate enough to be part of that, one of the first trips, it's the second week of the first trip. And Jane accompanied me. We went to Biloxi. Hal had been there for a week and saved us a small suite in the Methodist Church, had no ceiling, the fluorescent light was hanging down in the room, no lights in the room. Well, the light worked, but you didn't want to touch it. And Hal was in the room next to us with Jean Schwartz, the mayor, I think the mayor at that time of Duck. And took us in, made us comfortable, and got us set to really work hard for a week, and we did. We got a lot accomplished. We weren't rebuilding homes, we were just trying to get them so they could be rehabilited. People had moved back into them. Most of the ones that had been severely damaged had been destroyed, and we were trying to restore the ones that had not been destroyed. It was a scene of utter chaos. It was horrible. There were, you can't even visualize the amount of damage that had been done unless you went and walked through some of the streets where there were no houses left. And you saw things like a gambling barge that was probably 200 feet long and 50 feet wide, had been pushed all the way across the highway, 100 feet from the sound, from the oceanfront or Gulffront. Just horrible damage. Hal stepped in, and through his leadership, we were able to do a tremendous amount of work there, put a number of families back in their homes. One of the most rewarding experiences of my life, was working with that group, Carrying Hands from the church, and with, under Hal's leadership. It gave you a chance to see a truly capable and dedicated leader at work, and that was Hal. And from that, it was a life-changing experience for me. I saw how important and how good I felt, how important it was and how good I felt when I was able to give back and do something in a positive way. I learned, I guess, my first lesson in giving back from Hal and his example. The most valuable thing that came from that experience, though, was a lasting friendship with a remarkable person. Thank you, Hal. Now we'll go back to the agenda, if we can. Our first, our first order of business, if I'm not mistaken here, is election of a mayor pro tem.
We have, we have remarks, I believe, by...
I'm sorry. Apologize, Leo. I can't read.
That's all right. Well, I just want to thank George and Hal for their work. I worked with both of them when I first came here to Southern Shores and got involved in the civic association. Hal and I were at meetings together, and he kind of guided me along what I should be doing in the civic association. Then he and I worked, actually, we got to work together on the transfer of the canal bottoms from the civic association to the town. So we were the two involved with that project, and believe it or not, it's been a little while, but we're finally seeing that come to its conclusion. As you know, I had a tough campaign, and, but I do want to thank my family's here tonight, my daughter's here, the two grandchildren, of course, you know Mary Ellen. I've got some friends from Northern Virginia and my neighbors across the street that Michael was my sign manager, so. But anyhow, I'm looking forward to serving on the council, and thank you all, you know, you people that did vote for me, to trust me to represent you here and try to make the town a little better one. I know there'll be days when we have differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, we need to work together to make Southern Shores the town we want it to become. Thank you.
My apologies.
That's all right. That's once.
Now we get on with the election of the mayor pro tem, I believe.
We have to prove the agenda.
Have to prove the agenda first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong line. Approve the agenda. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'll get this, I'll catch on to this after a while, folks, believe me. It may take three meetings, but I'll get it. Yes.
Are there any comments or any thoughts on approving the agenda? I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Second. Thank you, David. Agenda's approved. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Now we can go to where I started out a little while ago. Organization of council meeting, election of mayor pro tem. Larry?
Mr. Mayor, with her consent, I would like to nominate Councilman Jody Hess.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Jody, congratulations.
Thank you. I'm getting used to this.
You're our new pro tem.
Do I have to go through what you went through?
Yeah, you do.
I, Jody Hess, do hereby solemnly swear, having been duly elected mayor pro tem of the town of Southern Shores by the Southern Shores Town Council, at a meeting held on December 3rd, 2013, that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties imposed upon me as mayor pro tem of the town of Southern Shores by law, so help me God.
Counsel, there's a resolution in our packet, tab two, I believe. That's the council schedule for next year. I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
May I make one comment before you make a vote?
Yes.
It would be my suggestion for us, those of us here, that for the workshop, the third Tuesday of the month, that we at least reserve it, because can you imagine if we need a meeting trying to pick a date that all of us agree on? So just kind of assume we might have a meeting, and then if we do, we can call it. It might make it easier, so that would be my suggestion.
The third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday.
This resolution does move the town council meeting to, for the first Tuesday, to 5:30 instead of 7:00. Is that correct?
Yes. Any questions?
No, I have none.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda, tab three in your folder.
I move we approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Staff reports, our town planner, Wes Haskett.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the month of November, there were nine zoning permits issued, 18 building permits, which consisted of five additions, alterations, and 13 others. There were 63 building inspections conducted at 39 different job sites. There are currently 12 single-family dwellings under construction in town, and the total amount of fees collected in November was $6,512.30. Also, just wanted to touch on the comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian plan. We did receive our notice to proceed from NCDOT this week, which authorizes us to begin to work on the project, so we were happy to receive that. And we will be holding our first steering committee meeting. Initially, we were going to try to hold that meeting sometime this month. However, looking at the holidays, we may end up having to push that back to January so that everyone will be able to attend. So I'll be sure to keep you all posted at my usual monthly reports on that project.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you.
To turn this way. Good evening. For the month of November 2013, the Southern Shores Police Department, as you can see on the screen, officers responded to 1,098 calls for service. Some of the breakdown were, they conducted 299 business checks, 207 residence checks. We had 16 mutual aid calls to surrounding police agencies, 59 direct traffic, most of those were at the school. We responded to 12 suspicious condition calls, responded to 11 alarms. Officers conducted 83 traffic stops and another 123 extra patrols. Breakdown of some of the incidents, investigators had 16 investigations that are ongoing. We had four larcenies, one fraud, three drug violations, and the officers made five arrests. One was for an assault, two were drug-related, one was a DWI, and you can see the other one was a traffic offense. Out of the 83 traffic stops, officers handed out 34 citations and another 41 warning citations. And three parking violations for the month of November, and we responded to one motor vehicle accident. One other thing that I wanted to bring to the attention of the council is that the budget amendment, I believe it was number seven, there is a husband and wife who want to remain anonymous, so we will call them Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, donated $2,925 so that we could purchase nine more of these AEDs, which are automated external defibrillators, so that now all of our patrol vehicles have one. So I just thought I'd ask. And I don't want to have to use it tonight, so you all behave. Any questions?
Thanks for bringing that up and reminding me of it.
Yes. Thank you.
Good job. Chief Harvey, he's not here tonight, I don't think.
Never worry.
He's not here. Okay, I thought so. Did anyone sign up for public comment?
Not sure.
If you would like to make a comment, you're certainly welcome to do so. You have up to three minutes. Since you didn't sign up, we'll still give you the opportunity if you'd like. If no, we'll go on to old business. Counsel? Anyone have any old business they'd like to discuss? New business? Town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My report tonight is, I would say, extensive, because we did want to lay out some items that will be on future agendas for you to consider over the next couple of months. I start out with just a light announcement. At the end of the meeting tonight, the Derrick County Public Information Officer has invited each town council to issue a Christmas greeting on Channel 20, and so when we adjourn tonight, if we can indulge you by filming a short greeting from the council with the mayor wishing the public season's greetings, so everybody can get their smile on and be ready.
Get your smile ready.
Also announce that tomorrow night at 5:00, we will cut on the lights for our first two outside Christmas trees in the front yard of the town hall, so you'll be seeing those during the holidays as well this year. In our third Christmas event, the town of Southern Shores will be co-sponsoring with Run Cations, the first annual Festivus 5K and 10K Run here in Southern Shores on Saturday morning, December 21. The proceeds, the beneficiary proceeds for that run will go to the Outer Banks Children's Museum and the Theater of Dare, and we'll also be having a food drive that morning as well. Everybody's invited. It will start at the marketplace at 8:00. The festivities, of course, will start sooner than that, but that is a, become a popular event. We're almost sold out, believe it or not, so hopefully that'll be a good event for the Christmas season here in town. An update on the canal maintenance dredging, Phase 2. The dredging crews are now in the north-south long canal between Duckwoods Drive and Potuskeet Trail. They still remain approximately eight to nine days ahead of schedule. We anticipate sometime mid-January they finishing. No incidents. We continue to have our weekly, and sometimes every other week, meetings with the contractor. So that is cruising right along. We're trying to keep the public informed as much as possible through photographs and public announcements on our newsletter. The next project to update you on, recall that we initiated the beach stabilization project using shoreline funds. Oceanfront owners have been notified and encouraged, if they want to, to install sand fencing prior to December 31. And beginning in January, using those funds, we will be planting beach grass and fertilizing beach grass on two separate occasions during January, and then later on in the early spring, we'll be doing some sea oats as well. And we'll be doing that townwide. We have awarded a contract for that, and we've also, we've gotten many positive comments back from oceanfront owners thanking the town for taking that initiative and getting information on sand fencing. So that is, that project is cruising right along, and we hope that it'll be finished by the time of beach season. Future agenda items in January, because of recent changes by the General Assembly and some land use laws, the staff, including the town attorney, will bring to you a general recommendation that you authorize us to take to the planning board code changes that are required because of that recent legislation, and it deals with the Board of Adjustment and also with wireless telecommunications towers. So those are mandated changes that we must amend the code to comply with, and we'll have those back in January for you to consider. We do have a scheduled item for the January workshop meeting, and because of that, I'll ask that the council consider that the workshop meeting for that month be held the third Tuesday, and it will be a joint, excuse me, a meeting to be held at the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department. The volunteer fire department will be scheduling an open house that day, the 9:00 meeting. The leadership of the fire department will make a presentation on organization of the fire department and also its operations, and give an extensive open house to the council so that we can, the council may learn anything it wants to, and hopefully there will be nothing unknown about the operations of the fire department and its relationship with the town. So I think that will be a positive workshop meeting for us that day, Mr. Mayor, and it will be held at the fire department. The, recall that approximately eight months ago, this council, with the town attorney, discussed a potential piece of local legislation dealing with quick-take condemnation rights for some coastal towns in the state of North Carolina. There is a list of coastal towns that do have the authority for a quick-take condemnation when it comes to beach nourishment for the purpose of acquiring easements and fee ownership in some cases to enable nourishment on the public beaches in the future. As you know, this is a short session coming up in May of the General Assembly, and on behalf of the council, I've conferred with Representative Tyne and Senator Cook, both individually, and both have indicated that they're more than happy to run this legislation if the council chooses to do that. So my recommendation, Mr. Mayor, is that I will recommend that it be placed, that discussion be placed on an upcoming agenda, preferably the that discussion be placed on an upcoming agenda, preferably the January agenda. And if council desires to, to ask our delegation for that, we would need to do a resolution. If council desires not to do that, then that's fine. But we have it in place now to proceed if council would like to do that. So I would suggest we do that in January and have a discussion again about the pros, cons, and the intricacies of that local legislation. Committees that council members are on currently. I wanted to go over this real briefly tonight. I talked to Mayor Bennett about doing this so that we all know who is on what, and if I say something wrong, please correct me. But on the Shoreline Commission is Councilwoman Hess, representing the council on that. On the Derrick County Tourism Board, I believe, is Councilman Sanders.
No.
Okay. You're, okay, excuse me. I said, I'm sorry. Correct me if I'm, okay. Rural Planning Organization is Councilman Lahan. On the Bicycle and Pedestrian Steering Committee that Wes spoke of previously, Councilwoman Hess and Mayor Bennett are both on that. And Councilman Sanders, I'm drawing a blank. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Okay. Representing the council on the GovEd Board, which is Channel Twenty, et cetera, publication, is Councilman Sanders. The two other committees that we've traditionally had appointments made by the mayor for are the Annual Capital Improvement Planning Committee and also a recently discussed new committee being the Finance Committee. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee begins its work traditionally about this time of the year. What we do is have staff members of the committee and, of course, two council members that are appointed to the committee. And we actually make a plan for presentation to the council with the, in conjunction with budget planning towards capital projects for the upcoming year. So this would be a capital improvement planning committee that would make plans for the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. And it would include every aspect of capital planning in the town. And I believe, Mayor Bennett, you and I had discussed, and you had expressed an interest on being on that. And if there's another appointment, you would make that. And hopefully we can either, we can meet as soon as possible, hopefully in December, if not in early January. So I'm not sure if you have a person in mind for that appointment or not.
I used to ask, I'd ask the members of council if, who'd be interested in helping with that. Larry Lahan has indicated he would like to help with that.
Okay.
So that's very, uh, okay.
The Finance Committee, what we had proposed from the staff level is that Budget Officer and the Finance Officer meet with a contingent of two, a committee of two council members, at least quarterly, to go over the financial documents that are produced each quarter. And that committee chairman could himself or herself make a report to the council the very next meeting, coming from that committee, as opposed to, and of course, Finance Officer and the Budget Officer could join in, but as a way to more, get in more deeply the intricacies of the financial documents. And I believe, Mayor Bennett, you had expressed an interest for that, and also Councilman Holland had expressed an interest in being on that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Leo.
Yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
If I have missed anything on committees or outstanding commissions and boards, please let me know. I've got one more thing on. And finally, Mayor Bennett and members of the council, recall, I believe all of you were here, even though we didn't, it was the previous council. Last council meeting, I was directed, as a town manager, to meet with the various organizations whose members use the incoming Gengi Creek, Currituck Sound channel, and to explore their level of interest in maintaining that channel on a long-term basis, including ways and means to pay for that maintenance. So on November twenty-sixth, as directed by the council, I met with representatives of those various organizations, which were the, which are, excuse me, the Southern Shores Civic Association, the Southern Shores Boat Club, the Martins Point Homeowners Association, also the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, as well as members of our own staff, and also Councilwoman Hess joined me as well. And Mayor Bennett was there at that time as mayor-elect and as a former Commodore of the Southern Shores Boat Club. We had a great meeting about the channel. I learned a lot. I know staff learned a lot. But some of the most important takeaways from that meeting were that we didn't receive any immediate concerns from users that they were concerned that the channel was filling in. In other words, the member users did not have any complaints about the depth of the channel currently. They all recognized that it can shift at a hurricane's notice, and it seemed to be the general consensus that the latest shoaling was as a result of Hurricane Irene. It was also the general consensus that the, as long as there was a depth of at least three and a half feet there, that there was, there were not going to be complaints based on the types of boats that use the channel. We did discuss the fact that that could all change in a moment's notice and that there was a general interest in keeping the channel open. We talked about ways and means of funding, keeping the, paying for any type of ongoing maintenance. And recall that currently, there, each year, these organizations make appropriations to the Southern Shores Boat Club to hold those funds to either repair the light poles or repair the lights or repair day markers. The Southern Shores Boat Club puts in eight hundred dollars a year. The Civic Association puts in eight hundred dollars a year. And the Martins Point Homeowners Association puts in four hundred dollars a year. And the Town of Southern Shores puts in four hundred dollars a year. That's what happens right now for items that are not connected to the dredging. We did have a general discussion, and realizing that I needed to come back and report to this council and get further direction, there was a general discussion consensus that possibly the sum of ten thousand dollars a year needed to be deposited in a fund for at least the next five years, if not more, to be there and be available for maintenance dredging if needed. And there needed to be a general consensus among those members that if something larger than that was needed, that we could, we'd all come together and agree further. That discussion produced a suggestion that each of the organizations contribute based on a certain percentage. And the percentages I'm going to cite to you were put out by suggestion of one of the attendees. And we just kind of latched on to these figures for general talking purposes for right now. And the Southern Shores Boat Club appropriating fifteen percent of that ten thousand dollars a year into a fund. The Southern Shores Civic Association appropriating thirty percent into a fund. The Martins Point Homeowners Association appropriating fifteen percent into a fund. And the Town of Southern Shores appropriating forty percent of that into a fund. There was discussion about whether that percentage needed to include the current four hundred dollars, for example, or not. It was decided that I would just draft an MOU for discussion purposes only, to bring back to that group to talk. And that we would not, we would have the four hundred dollars or eight hundred dollars included in that percentage to start with for started discussions. So that's what I took away from the meeting. I volunteered to begin drafting an MOU based on those parameters. But before I do anything, I wanted to bring this back to you for some directions, some consensual direction before we did anything. The... Recall also that the Town of Southern Shores puts money into a fund. This is for a channel that is owned, that the bottom land is owned by the state of North Carolina. The public uses the channel. One point of discussion came up, and I'll, I will take the credit for bringing it up. There is, the boat ramp currently owned by the Southern Shores Civic Association, and I'm assuming it's maintained by the boat club, is not available for use by just a citizen or resident of the Town of Southern Shores who's not a member of the Southern Shores Civic Association. So I'd like to continue to bring that into the discussion because forty percent is the most of any of the organizations would be putting into this maintenance fund. And it would be public dollars. So those are the parameters. I believe it was discussed that the Southern Shores Boat Club would continue to hold the fund. But again, that's something this council can direct me to put in the draft otherwise right now, or I can do a lot of flip-flopping on the draft. So weirdly, we hadn't gotten anywhere. All this is, will be a draft for discussion. And I'd like to solicit any thoughts that the council would direct me to do in trying to draft this, if this is the route we want to take.
Just one clarification. The Southern Shores Civic Association holds those funds.
Okay, excuse me.
The boat club collects their money and gives it to the city.
Okay, all right, excuse me. Thank you.
Council, I would like to have your, Jody and I were both at that meeting. And I think it was, I thought it was a very positive meeting. All the participants seemed willing to cooperate and work with the long-term maintenance of that channel. Does anyone else have thoughts about this? Jody, you were there. You had, you had the most concern, I think.
I have a question, Peter. Our current permit for dredging only goes for another two years, I believe. But we, but there is a limit on the dredging permit that we have now. Would we have to have renewals of those permits on a continuing basis in order to do a sort of an emergency dredge after a hurricane?
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up. I skipped over that. Our current permit, I believe, is good through two thousand fifteen. And it is just a matter of requesting extensions every year. We can request extensions by letter. And Division of Coastal Management, we discussed that. And they do that on a regular basis for the major permits that are similar to that up and down the coast. So all we would need to do is request extension. And when we do kick in maintenance, we would, all we do is fax in a letter to them that we're doing maintenance dredging. So it's, there's nothing more than that. It does not go to the permit writers in Moorehead City. It's handled locally.
So we can extend the permit without having definite plans to do dredging?
Yes, sir. We can hold that permit and continue to extend, or request extension as, for contingency dredging in the future.
I have, I have a question. The Coast Guard was a member of this. I don't see their name participating in the funding.
Coast Guard Auxiliary, the Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla was represented there. They don't really have a pot of annual funding. And I'm not quite sure, they, they get a lot of their expenses paid for, as far as fuel, portions of it paid for by the federal government, and that's it. They have to buy their own uniforms, supply their own private vessels, and their own private airplanes. So they would not be a funding source to consider for this MOU. That would be the way it would be. I mean, I will say that the Fed, the federal government and the state government are potential funding sources that we can go to for possible grant funds, and that was discussed in the meeting. And I believe Mr. Mitchell, the current president of the Civic Association, and I do have a meeting set up with Representative Tine already and Mayor Bennett to explore potential state funding. There is potential for federal funding if those type programs might be available out there. But again, we would be competing with everybody else for that. But no, the Auxiliary Flotilla itself would not be a signature. They just don't have any funds that they keep on hand for that.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
I see everybody's to put in a percentage of that ten thousand. Who is going to manage that, that to make sure, one, that everybody contributes on a yearly basis? Because I could see maybe we get into a problem and somebody didn't fulfill their agreement. We maybe, as a town, could end up being the ones with the large money pot being looked at.
And that was a concern. That was a concern that I had. I think what we would have to do in the MOA is create a date for contribution somewhere in a time of the year where we wouldn't be hopefully threatened by shoaling, but we would have a date where everybody needs to put in the pot. And if somebody doesn't put in the pot, then the sirens goes off and we have to get everybody else back in the room and say, hey, we got to start all over again if you're not going to put the money in. That's the only way I think we can manage it. The other point of your question, though, is who holds the money? That is a discussion that I, that was the main reason I wanted to come to y'all tonight. Currently, as Mayor Bennett said, SSCA holds the small fund for the maintenance. This would obviously be a larger fund. You know, I don't know that there would be any objection to the Town of Southern Shores holding maintenance, the dredging funds in a separate fund. That's something I can go back and discuss with the group and see if there's any objection to that. Or I can go ahead and draft that in the MOU in that format, where there are actually two funds, a small fund and a larger fund.
Would that then be a line item in our budget processing?
The contribution will be a line item, and then we would have to show that as a fund for reporting, yes. It would be an accounting fund.
I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
That was my only concern from the meeting, was that I have a real problem putting taxpayer dollars in somebody else's hands, and basically we're being held by another organization. So I'd rather see it being held by us in some way.
That was my thought, that we probably shouldn't be the, the town shouldn't be the holders of it. And I mean, you know, earning, earning interest is not a big deal right now. But I just want somebody that's in, that's in control of it so that when we do, if we do have an incident, then it can be distributed without a lot of conversation.
I think we're kind of in agreement on that. I think, I know Jody and I agree on that. Leo, I think feels the same way.
Yeah.
I think the town should monitor.
I just want some oversight.
Well, the town would be the one that would, the ideal candidate for doing the contracting or dredging in case it needed to be done.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that if, you know, we did this, that the monies that are needed each year for maintenance of the poles, lights, and day markers, I would definitely like to demarcate those out because I don't think, the town doesn't need to be in the business of keep continuing to maintain those. And I would propose that the boat club continue to do what it's doing with that, those monies, and we just have a separate pot for the dredging.
And whether that pot includes the existing twenty-four hundred dollars or not, we have to decide. In other words, it's about, if I'm not mistaken, eight hundred, eight hundred and sixteen, and what?
Yeah, I would say that the, the, what I were proposing in the MOU is that the existing appropriation for eight hundred, four hundred dollars a year, continue, and it'd be a line item for day markers, poles, and lights to, as an appropriation to the boat club, like we've been doing. And then we just have another line item for appropriation into the Gengi Creek dredging fund, or whatever we're going to call it.
And we don't have to include lights in this MOU at all.
No, we can just keep, we could keep that separate.
Whole separate issue. And I like the idea. You also have the discussion with the ramp. I think that's going to become pretty important if we're setting aside, again, taxpayer dollars from the whole town into something like that.
Well, where that can, where that can be addressed, I think, more directly, Jody, is when we talk about some of the other users of that ramp.
Yep.
We have the marine patrol people. We have some of the people who do maintenance for the, for the markers and buoys in the, in Currituck Sound, in south of us, toward Manito and beyond, that come and use our ramp for access to the waterway. So I think we have a little bit of a foot in the door with, we talked to Paul, whoever we had to talk to about this.
Any other comments or directives? I will take this discussion and try to begin drafting an MOU, a draft MOU, and call this committee back in, and we can continue on with discussions, and I'll report back. I think, I think we made some good progress.
You addressed this, you addressed it in part. Your question came up during this, during this meeting. We established the fund, and we all are on board with that, and we have ten thousand four hundred dollars in the pot. And we have a Hurricane Irene, again, next fall. We have to dredge because now the, now the depth's only two feet or less. So what do we do? And who pays for that? And that's where we have to come back to the drawing board once again and say, okay, we're all going to contribute this much money, but somebody's got to front the bill for dredging, which is probably going to come back on the town, would be my guess.
Well, I mean, I would call them in as quickly as possible, all the users, and make... it clear that the Town of Southern Shores holds the camera major permit, that we continue to be due diligent and getting extended, extended, extended for this purpose and report on the amount and currently in the fund and say, okay, who's up, like you say, and then we'll have to decide. But that, the MOU, we'd call for that, call for a meeting and.
It's not just something we can decide we're going to dredge or somebody else can decide and the group will get together again and discuss the issue.
Right. And we'll have to determine cost too at that point.
Exactly.
Exactly. Any other discussion? Any questions?
Good meeting.
Good, it was a good meeting, very positive. I'd like to report that to the people here tonight, it was an excellent meeting. Town Attorney, Peter, is that your report?
Yes, that's my report. Unless there are any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Very comprehensive and good. You did a good job on that. Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to you and Councilman Holland. Looking forward to working with both of you. I wanted to first say we can probably take the closed session that's on the agenda off. I think I'll discuss this somewhat outside with Peter and I believe all of you are aware that, and most everyone is aware that there's a lawsuit involving the town and our mayor is also a party to that lawsuit and so probably be best for us to develop a litigation committee and I'll be bringing for a resolution to do that probably at your next meeting so that we can separate those duties between the town and our mayor and move forward. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Let's see if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. I just got a couple of things to say in closing. I was fortunate enough to work for over two years with our town staff, our town manager and the council under Mr., under Hal Denny's direction, Mayor Denny's direction. I'm very comfortable that the staff we have, the town staff we have here are professional in every way, do a superb job. Having worked with them, as I said, for that period of time, I know how hard they work and what they accomplish. And it's a real, it's a real blessing to me to be able to step into a situation where we have qualified, competent people from the town manager, as Hal said, all the way down and back up the ladder. I'm looking forward to that. I'm also looking forward to working with my fellow council members. I consider them all to be not just associates up here on the podium, but friends and I've known some of them for, David in particular, for over 20 years. We go back a long ways. I think all of us are motivated by doing what's best for the town, long-term and short-term, and not by any selfish self-interest. I think we're, I think we all would say that. I want to thank all of you here tonight for your support and I want to assure you that I will do my best to serve you and serve our town in a way that reflects positively on our community and my role on council. I thank you for your support. Jody, you want to start? Any other comments?
Yeah, I want to say congratulations to you, Mayor Bennett, and to Councilman Holland. I think it's, I'm really looking forward to working with this group, it's going to be great. I also just wanted to say thank you for your kind words, Mayor Denny. It's really interesting because I thought of a couple of the things I could say to you and you said the exact same thing up there. For example, how long we worked together, over six years together, and then the fact that we never, we didn't always agree, but we knew how to work with one another when we didn't agree and it was really, it's been a wonderful, wonderful relationship. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jody. David?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things. First of all, I want to thank Hal and George for their service to the citizens of Southern Shores. Of the six years I've served on the council, the last two years in particular have been the most enjoyable and I think fruitful for the people of this town. It really was congealed into teamwork and something that I think had been missing a few years, few, a few years back. And through that teamwork, I think we've accomplished a lot in the last two years effectively and efficiently and without a lot of rigmarole. And I just wanted to say I will miss working with, with you, Hal, and George also. Also, having known Tom and Leo for a number of years, I'm certain that we'll continue to work in that teamwork with an effort to, to continue the momentum that, that we've gotten started here. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mayor?
Well, yes, I would simply like to echo my thanks and congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, Tom, and to Leo. Look forward to serving with both of you in the coming couple of years. And I'd also like to recognize Hal for his mentorship, he's actually the reason I'm here. He browbeat me for several, excuse me, several times to run for council and I'm glad you did, Hal. Thank you very much.
Leo?
I just got about three things I just want to mention. One is more of a kind of a civic thing. There's a, the Red Cross is having a blood drive tomorrow from 12 to 6 at Holy Redeemer. So if any of you want to contribute some, a pint of blood, they'll be there from 12 to 6. The other thing, I don't know if everybody saw it, but the Bonner Bridge is now closed and there'll be, there's a ferry system started that goes from Stumpy Point down to Road Dancy. So if anybody was planning a trip down there, it may be a little more difficult for you to make that trip. The other thing I want to mention is Thursday night, although we did not have anybody from the CPOA meant to talk or make a report, Thursday night, there will be a change of leadership in that group, will have an organizational change and that is because I'm resigning from the board to avoid any conflict of interest between the town and Chickahaw Property Owners Association. So that won't, is not a rumor, that is going to happen. So you're aware of it.
Thank you.
And I don't have to worry about a conflict.
Anything else we need to discuss?
That's all I got. I thanked everybody earlier and looking forward to working with the group. I've known everybody for some time here, Larry and, well, Jody and Tom and I have served on the SSCA at one time or another together, Tom and I on the Boat Club, so we kind of know each other's idiosyncrasies and what buttons to push and not to push.
Yeah, I want to apologize to you all for the rocky starts this evening. I didn't do a very good job by reading the agenda. I've got to work on that. I appreciate Jody's help and Ben's help and Peter's help in getting me through that and I appreciate your patience in not starting to throw something up here. If there's no other, no other business, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Thank you. Meetings adjourned. Okay. Thank you.
Good job.